All right, the time is 8:16. I'm going to call to order the Lansing City Council meeting for April 7th, 2025. And we are to the roll call, Mr. Clerk?
Okay. Councilmember Brown.
President.
Councilmember Carter.
Here.
Councilmember Garza. Councilmember Hussein.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Present.
Councilmember Cost.
Here.
Councilmember Pelley Vanaglu.
Present.
Councilmembers Spatafor.
Present.
There are seven members present at quorum. Councilmember Garza is absent. And we are to the meditation and pledge of allegiance.
Does anyone have anybody that what? Councilman Spatafor?
Mr. Mayor, I would like us to keep in our thoughts this evening the family, friends, and coworkers of Jody Ackerman from the Parks and Recreation Department who passed away unexpectedly. Longtime public servant in the city and very important to that department in our community. So want to make sure we honor her memory this evening.
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, and I wanted to echo that, you know, Jody Ackerman in our Parks Department, I think we all knew her. She dealt with our kids, our youngest of kids. Both my kids were in the foster program and they would go there after school. And she was so great with them. My son was a little awkward when he was young and I'd say, he wasn't bullied, but he was susceptible to it and didn't want to be around people he was uncomfortable with. She understood him and she helped him. And I think that he is the person he is today in understanding because of Jody. She has been just incredible. And to hear her passing last weekend, I know it affected our staff. I know it affected many of us. So I do hope we will keep her in our thoughts and prayers and her and our whole Parks Department who's feeling it. Thank you.
Thank you. Vice President Carter.
I would like to make a memory or recognize a close friend of mine for over 30 years. She recently transitioned to a battle of breast cancer this Saturday. And so I would love for you all to keep the Hinkle and Bingham family in your prayers and send your condolences. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? Councilman.
Yeah, I'm not sure if folks are aware, but Mr. Eldridge Cook, sorry, also known as Cookie, did pass March 28th. He was 85 years old. And to know him was to love him. This man was an incredible, incredible man. I'm going to ask you guys to keep not only his friends and family in your thoughts, but really the entire community. Eldridge up until, you know, right around the time he passed, continued to do incredible things for really the entire community, specifically South Lansing and maybe even a little bit more hyper-focused in terms of his later years on Churchill Downs. But incredible, incredible guy, and he's certainly going to be missed. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
You have for your approval the council proceedings of March 24th.
Vice President Carter.
I will make a motion to approve the March 24th minutes as presented.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on these minutes? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes.
And we are to special ceremonies and presentations. We have a tribute and recognition of the Lansing Reading is Fundamental Program 50th Anniversary.
Councilman Spatafor.
Thank you, Council President. Tonight, I'm proud to move the resolution recognizing the 50th anniversary of the Lansing Reading is Fundamental Program, a program that has played a quiet but powerful role in shaping young minds in our city for five decades. Like so many, I have fond memories of picking out my RIF books, getting to choose something that was mine to take home and read. And yes, I even remember picking out CD-ROM computer games, which probably reveals how old I am. But those moments mattered. They planted a love of reading and learning that stayed with me ever since. RIF has made reading both accessible and exciting for generations of Lansing students. It reminds us that reading isn't just fundamental, it's also fun, and that joy is often the spark that keeps kids coming back to books again and again. I want to invite everyone to celebrate this incredible milestone at the Lansing RIF 50th Anniversary Celebration at Francis Park on May 14th at 4:00 PM. It'll be a great chance to honor the volunteers, educators, and community partners who've kept this program going strong. So I'd like to first move the resolution.
We have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes.
Thank you very much. And the resolution encourages people to continue to support the work of RIF, to build a more literate and more imaginative Lansing. And now I'd like to invite Melanie Baker from the Lansing RIF program to make a few remarks.
Thank you, Councilman. It is my honor to receive this on behalf of Lansing RIF, which I've proudly been a part of since I came on the advisory board in 2008 and became director then in 2017. But I am by no means alone. We are thankful for 25-plus active, working board members, former directors, the school volunteers, about 200 volunteers a year that make Lansing RIF work. And for, and I want to receive this honor on behalf of 10,000 current Lansing School District students who receive RIF this year and of the tens of thousands who have received 3 million books in the last 50 years. Most of all, I want to thank our community because even when RIF has been threatened financially, when we have lost federal funding and other funding, with, through the organizational support of the Lansing School District, that's important to us. But the money for the books comes from this community, every penny of it. And I say thank you for the good that you do.
Okay, our next special ceremony is the appointment of Melissa Reba as an At-Large Member of the Historic District Commission.
Councilman Hussein.
Absolutely. And so actually, the next three appointments, or I should say the three appointments under special ceremonies, all actually came out as resolutions of our Development and Planning Meeting on March 26th. I was not present at that meeting. As a school teacher, married to a school teacher with three school-aged kids, we actually had spring break. It all aligned, the stars aligned, because there's several different schools mixed into that kind of mix. And we were out of town. So typically Chair Garza would actually be presenting, but he is actually, he has an excused absence tonight. I did try to watch the video back of the committee. And unfortunately, the first, or I should say number four and five, video didn't cut on until after their interviews. And then with regard to the audio with Ms. Melissa Reba, it wasn't the greatest. So in any event, we do have Councilman Cost to fill in the gaps. Should I miss something? But I do have the documents in front of us, so I will do my best. First, we have Melissa Reba, who is currently the Research and Evaluation Director for the Center for Health and Residential Transformation, I believe, with Wait For It, I think it's U of M. Is that correct? Oh, my goodness. Okay, we'll forgive you for that. Outside of that, this is again, this is for the Historic District Commission. She is actually a Ward Four resident. She's lived in the city of Lansing since 1995. One of the things that we always like to see is an opportunity to place people on their first choice in terms of board to serve on, and this was her first choice. In terms of her application, she discussed a desire to serve because she wants to be a part of helping to preserve the historical integrity of Lansing's buildings while also helping in the redevelopment and bringing of these spaces into alignment with current needs. More than anything, of course, we appreciate Melissa Reba's desire and her willingness to serve on this particular board. So with that being said, I would move the appointment.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion on this appointment? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes. If you want to come on down, Melissa, we'll swear you in here with the clerk.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
Perfect. And this would be for a term to expire February 28th, 2027. Again, Mr. Britton was also in front of the Economic Development and Planning Committee on March 26th. He is currently a Compliance Analyst with Consumers Energy, a graduate of Michigan State University, so he has that going for him. He, if you look at his application, he lives in Ward Four. It says that he moved to the city in 2022, but I think actually he moved back to the city in 2022. So he was actually born and raised in Lansing, says that he has lived here for most of his life, with a few brief stints in New York City, Washington DC, and Seattle. Does have a Masters in Economics, of course, that is applicable to this particular board. Again, first choice, which we love to see, was the EDC tax, or I should say Tifa and the Brownfield Redevelopment Authority. And then in his application, he stated that he would like to serve really on any Board of Commission, but this one specifically because he believes it could have an impact by applying his knowledge of economics and some of his experience as an engineer. So in any event, the committee did pass this unanimously on March 26th. So with that being said, I would move the appointment.
Okay, do we have any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes. Brian, do you want to come down?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, and your family can come down too as well. Or not.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Economic Development Corporation.
Tax Increment Finance Authority.
Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Lansing Brownfield Redevelopment Authority.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors member, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you so much.
Sure. And if approved, this would be an appointment to expire July 31st, 2025. And as Clerk Swob said, this is for a resident position on the South MLK CIA. The appointee again is Michael Owsley. He is currently a resident of, must be, the Fourth Ward. This is, first choice for board to serve on was the South MLK CIA. And one of the things that stuck out to me, I'm sorry, with regards to the application, is he talked about, I mean, he talked about a little bit about in terms of some of the professional experience that might be applicable here. But I love the fact that he talked about using his experience in field organizing to bring more citizens into the process in terms of what economic development should look like, what it could look like, what advancing that corridor could and should look like, really wanting to be inclusive of the community in terms of any type of visioning for the corridor and obviously implementation along the corridor. Also talked a lot about the importance of, which I couldn't agree more, the importance of improving the walkability, the bikeability in this particular corridor and really across the city of Lansing. So certainly, I think he's going to fill a need on that particular authority. And with that being said, I would move the appointment.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed, passes. Michael, you want to come on down to the well? If you've got family, they can come down too.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of...
South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard Corridor Improvement Authority.
Board of Directors.
Board of Directors, according to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to move on to comments by council members and the clerk. Do we have any council member comments? Councilman Hussein.
Sure. I actually have a few. So first, the SWAG quarterly meeting, the Southwest Action Groups quarterly meeting, will take place actually tomorrow at 6:00 PM. That'll take place at 2101 West Holmes, the South Side Community Coalition, if you know it by name. They actually are going to have a guest speaker, Ms. Sarah Lurie, who is the Community Mental Health for Clinton Eaton and Ingham, the CEO for that entity. Again, she will be there as a featured speaker to discuss the new crisis care center that will be established over on Green Lawn at the old McLaren campus. And essentially, it's a crisis stabilization center for behavioral health services, and that's set to open in 2026. So that, in addition to obviously a number of Southwest Lansing updates. So if you are interested in that conversation or being a part of the work of Southwest Lansing, please plan to attend. Also, there will be a Southwest Action Group cleanup that will take place on the Saturday, April 12th, starting at 10:00 to 12:00 noon. If interested, we are going to meet at the Town Square at 3434 Pleasant Grove. There will be light refreshments, there will be supplies, things of that nature, a little bit of fellowship, some discussion of projects. There's a number of projects kind of in and around that intersection. And so please, please come out and participate. Also on, so a lot of actually exciting updates on, let me see, I want to make sure I get the date right, Thursday. So this Thursday, April 10th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, there is an open house style Pleasant Grove Road public meeting. This is long overdue in terms of that particular road, that particular road, the condition actually precipitated Mr. Shore, who doesn't necessarily always talk about the different public service projects, reconstruction projects, that type of thing, that are going to take place as a state of the city. But he actually mentioned this one. And this is a big one. We know that Pleasant Grove Road has needed some love, some TLC for quite some time. But what I really like about what the administration's doing is they're actually bringing folks in from the community to talk about not only the project, but the potential for, as an example, some reconfiguration of that particular road. And so could we, as an example, go to, I think specifically with it putting in the communications as a shift to a three-lane configuration, opportunities for walkability, bikeability, up with a turn lane, you know, that type of thing. But in any event, again, that is Thursday, April 10th, from 4:00 to 6:00 PM, and that is at the El Frieda Schmidt South Side Community Center at 5825 Wise Road. And I'm sure Mr. Shore will talk a little bit about that during his announcements. Also, because we will be doing the SWAG cleanup, our constituent contact meeting in the Third Ward for this month is canceled, sorry. And we are hoping that folks will attend the cleanup if possible in lieu of that meeting. We will be back at it May 10th at 5825 Wise Road. And we will actually have Representative Whitwer, who represents a significant portion of, well, an important part of the Third Ward. She will be there to talk about some updates at the state level. She also, her team, is interested in making sure they're kind of meeting us where we're at and addressing the concerns that we need or want to prioritize essentially. And so if you have, if you are planning to attend, if you're a regular attendee and there are things you want her to address, her team to address, please send those to me via email, and I'll make sure that we get those to her team in advance. And then lastly, there is a call for all artists. We actually have a few folks from the LEDC in the audience. They do an incredible job getting out to neighbor meetings. I see Aurelius Christian as an example. And they make sure that they spread this type of information everywhere they go. But the Lansing Economic Development Corporation and CADA are actually looking for talented artists to create artwork for bus shelters along the South MLK corridor. They are saying that this is more than just an art installation. I believe it to be that. And it's an opportunity to bring creativity and inspiration to the community. It is open to all artists of all backgrounds. Selected works will be displayed at local bus shelters, and they're asking you to submit your work online. Deadline for submissions is April 13th at 11:59. And if interested, visit lansingedc.com for more information. All right, thank you.
Okay, I've got Councilman Brown.
Thank you, President Cost. I just wanted to recognize, we have a student studying broadly from Cape Town, South Africa, Mordecai May in the audience. Good to see you. He's been doing community work interning. As well as, I wanted to give a big thank you to our office manager, Sherry Bulk, for this new chair, so I'm able to sit and participate effectively in our meetings. All right, thank you so much.
Councilwoman Pelley Vanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. I would like to know how I can request an, just kidding. I'm happy for you. Well, I want to tell the public, if they are in the mood to help out their neighborhoods and clean up, this next weekend sounds like the weekend because in addition to the SWAG community cleanup, the East Side Neighborhood Organization actually unfortunately had postponed their neighborhood cleanup from last Saturday to this coming Saturday. And according to their Facebook post, East Side Neighborhood Organization, the group is meeting at 9:00 AM. The cleanup will last from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM, and they're meeting at the Comerica Parking Lot on Homer. So for more information, I believe you could go to Facebook or search the East Side Neighborhood Organization for more information. Also, I wanted to announce that, as we had announced previously earlier in the year, the At-Large, excuse me, the At-Large Council members are holding constituent contact meetings quarterly. Our next meeting will be Saturday, April 26th, at the Capital Area District Library South. That's located at 3500 South Cedar Street, and that will be from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM. We will have more notices going out before that time. Thank you.
Councilman Spatafor.
Just want to remind folks too, DL, I wanted me to pass along, the Easter Egg Hunt and the Bunny Hop on the Square are both Saturday, April 19th. The Egg Hunt is from 10:00 to 11:30, and the Bunny Hop is from 12:00 to 2:00.
Thank you. Anything further? Okay?
Okay, I have no announcements at this time, so we are to community event announcements. If you're here and wish to tell us about an event, we'll give you up to one minute to give us the details.
Dang, I was quick. This thing's on, right? Okay, so note that there's not going to be a neighborhood meeting for the Old Everett Neighborhood this month. However, Scott Woods, the neighbors of Scott Woods, they're going to have a neighborhood meeting this Wednesday at 6:30 PM at Sycamore Creek Church. That is at the corner of Pennsylvania and Mount Hope. And on Saturday at 3:00 PM, there's going to be a Scott Woods Spring Picnic at Fenner Nature Center. You can bring whatever games and food you want to it as some sort of like a potluck. Just no alcohol and no adult games. That's not allowed by the city. Also, on Sunday, April 27th, I think it was, there's going to be a cleanup for the Stab Now Park at 1:00 to 3:00 PM, I think. So keep an eye on that.
Thank you. Any other community event announcements?
Well, spring and cleanup are a bonus, that's for sure. So I have two announcements for the Friends of Lansing's Historic Cemeteries, and they're both in North Cemetery on Sunday, the 27th. And they're, one is from 10:00 to 12:00. That'll be our spring cleanup in the cemetery. We will be providing rakes and landscape bags, trash pickers, and disposable gloves. So from 10:00 to 12:00 at North Cemetery, spring cleanup. And then from 1:00 to 3:00 in the same cemetery, we'll have a free class for those who register on our Facebook page or our website to learn how to clean monuments and markers properly with the right materials and methods. And then after the training is completed, you'll have an opportunity to clean some veterans' headstones within that cemetery under guidance of the teacher. So again, Sunday, the 27th, from 10:00 to 12:00 for spring cleanup, from 1:00 to 3:00 for training how to clean monuments and markers. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other community events?
Sorry, it says do not touch the mic. Hi, everybody. My name is Alyssa. I have two events for you. One is, as Nicholas mentioned, I will be coordinating a cleanup at Debbie Stabenow, formerly known as Washington Park, because I am now a Fourth Ward resident. Hey, sorry, Ryan. And I would love to have you come. Shout out to Robin for making sure that I know how to sign up with the city so I can get supplies and support from the city to do that. So looking forward to that. And then the other event is, I run Sober in Lansing, and we are doing quarterly events this year. Normally, they're monthly. This year, they're quarterly. And we will be having a group hike on May 17th from 1:00 to 3:30 PM at Fenner Nature Center. So April 27th, 1:00 to 3:00, park cleanup, and May 17th, 1:00 to 3:30, group hike for Sober in Lansing. Thank you.
Thank you. Other community events? All right, seeing none, we're to speaker registration for public comment on legislative matters, which does include the public hearing, which is item seven. So it includes items seven through 26 on the printed agenda. We'll give you about another minute to sign up with Haley in the back if you haven't already done so. And with that, we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. So several of the things that I was going to mention were mentioned, so I'll mention them quickly but skate through them. First, I want to congratulate everyone involved with the New Vision Lansing. I know council passed the money. We had several folks that were there today. It's really exciting to see the groundbreaking and progress start on the 28-story tower that we're going to have downtown. Wonderful for housing, for our community, and transformational. Congratulations to Dunkin' Donuts, who opened a new location at 6333 South Cedar. So that's wonderful for southeast Lansing. We also did a ribbon cutting on Saturday for, I believe it was called Plush, which is a wonderful beauty salon. Certainly, I don't need it as much as other people, but I'm really excited in southeast Lansing that we're seeing so many businesses that are investing. Yard waste starts a week from today, on the 14th. I know, driving around Lansing over the weekend, people, as they usually do, are starting to put out many, many bags of yard waste. Please know that it won't start being picked up until next Monday. And I ask people for patience because, as we all know, because we've all been through it so many years in a row, when there's tens and twenties of bags at residences, because you're just getting to your yard waste, it slows down our folks that pick it up. So sometimes, we don't get to it early on in a week. So they will do their best to get it. I was excited to announce our housing rehab plan. Info's on the website, but we're partnering with Capital Area Community Services to make sure that folks can utilize the city if you are unable to afford many housing rehab needs, roofs and boilers, things like that. So please check out the city website. If you are, as everyone here is, if you are in City Hall, we now have returned the income tax drop box to City Hall. Thank you to Councilman Cost, who saw that and realized that we took it away during some work and it never went back. And Crystal Thomas, our treasurer, was appreciated the information. And so that's back in City Hall. The Film Festival's going on, and will continue this Wednesday through Saturday. It's my understanding the movie Kill Will is having its national release at the Methodist Community Church downtown at 5:30 PM on Friday. And that's been going great. Councilman Spatafor mentioned the Bunny Hop on the Square. That should be a lot of fun. Councilman Hussein mentioned, our public service actually has two open houses. One at the Neighborhood Empowerment Center for the Pleasant Grove construction from Holmes to Mount Hope. There is April 10th, 4:00 to 6:00 PM, sorry, that's not at the Neighborhood Empowerment Center, that's at Schmidt. And yeah, one of the big decisions that they want to hear from the neighbors on is, do we have a turn lane down the middle that will take away some parking? They want to hear from the neighbors. Additionally, public service has an open house in the Walnut Neighborhood, for Walnut Neighborhood and the Lansing Avenue Pump Station. Neighborhood and the Lansing Avenue Pump Station Improvements, which is one of our CSO, or sewer separation projects, Thursday, April 10th, from 4:30 to 6:30, that's at the Neighborhood Empowerment Center. Our Neighborhoods Department has their Neighborhood Resource Summit at Union Missionary Baptist Church on April 23rd tomorrow. We are having our meeting to discuss our homeless plan at 5:30 at Foster, called the Lansing Path Forward. And then the Mayor's Ramadan Unity Dinner will be on April 21st, so I might be late for council that evening, apologies, but that's the annual East Lansing-Lansing Mayor's Unity Dinner on April 21st. I believe it's at 5:30 at the Lansing Center. So again, I'll be a little late for council. And those are just some of the many things going on. Oh, and this Thursday at 8:15 PM, we have a flashlight Easter egg hunt at Guyer Park. So if you've got kids and you want to bring a flashlight and run around looking for the Easter eggs, Guyer Park this Thursday at 8:15 PM. That's it. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, we are to public comment on legislative matters, as I indicated, that's Items 7 through 26 on the agenda, and Item 7 is a public hearing repealing Section 684.04 restroom use regulations. Give an overview of that.
Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you. This is for the repealment of Chapter 684, which is the sex-related criminal offense ordinances in Lansing. There's four of them. The one we're looking to repeal is the last one, which is, first is no prostitution, then is no indecent exposure, then there's no voyeurism, which is peeping in windows, and then, for some reason, in 1986, there's no using the restrooms of the opposite gender. So we're looking to just strike that part, 684.04, completely out. It's been brought to council's attention that there are people who basically aren't able to use the restrooms in comfort, safety, and with dignity, as we've received some letters saying the same, and that there are, whether it's transgender people, whether it's non-binary people, whether it's someone who is trying to rush to a restroom and it's closed and they need to use the other one, it's currently a crime punishable by jail if you do this. And I see our LPD officer back there, keep an eye on the restrooms until this is repealed, but right now, you could be arrested for it. Not that that would happen, but it is on the books that way. So we've heard from people, and we had it in our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. We looked at whether we wanted to tamper, or change, or amend any of the language, and through our city attorney and our committee, we determined that it's best just to repeal this altogether. Again, this is not a free rein to go in the bathrooms and do anything, because a person can still be trespassed for doing things in the bathroom, they could still, you know, you still can't do anything illegal. Moreover, we heard, we received letters from people, and it's been noted that it's not, for example, a trans person going in the bathroom causing safety issues for other people, more so as the stats show that if anything, it would be a trans person who's in fear of using the restroom and could have harm done to them. So again, this is just to take that off of the criminal books and to take it off altogether. And again, it's not just, right now, the way the law is, it's throughout the entire city of Lansing. It's not just city buildings, which in itself might be a problem with the law, but either way, it's to be stricken if we decide to repeal it. Today's the public hearing, and that's the information I have.
Thank you.
Okay, first, we have Anastophers Hopkins, followed by Verena Courtney.
I'm sorry.
I called Anastophers Hopkins, followed by... Sorry. I always give two names so that you can be ready.
Hello, I'm here to speak on Item 7, the public, for the public hearing. Honestly, repealing this archaic ordinance is such a wonderful choice. I'm incredibly happy that this council is choosing not to police people's genders while they're peeing, honestly, especially while the federal government is taking active steps towards harming trans, non-binary, and LGBTQ communities. Choosing the harm reduction route for Lansing is better for the community writ large, and it's a great step towards welcoming our queer siblings in sort of controversial spaces, if you will. I hope there aren't any scumbags or pervs in this audience who need to know the genitals of the person peeing next to them, and I yield my time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Verena Courtney, followed by Linda Lee Tarver.
My name is Verena Courtney. I am a trans woman that lives in the city of Lansing. I have used the women's public restroom several times over the past many months without issue, and I recognize that I am very grateful to have had, you know, be able to just do my business in dignity and safety. And I recognize that, as a trans woman, I have to live with the fact that at any moment, when I use the public restroom that makes me feel safe and comfortable, I may be subject to, you know, harassment, to violence at the whims of someone who may have a problem with me being in their facilities. These are not simply anxiety-fueled exaggerations. These are real things that happened to many trans women and men all across America, fueled further by the transphobic rhetoric and executive orders of the current federal administration. And it is not only the trans community that gets harmed by ordinances like this. I would like to cite the story of Miss Dani Davis, a woman in Florida who was a Walmart employee. She was assigned female at birth and exists as a cis woman. When doing her business in a women's public restroom in a Walmart facility, a man stormed the restroom, shouting profanities, angry, saying that they are going to protect their partner from the trans people. After the man left of his own volition, she reported the incident to her direct supervisor. Apparently, the reason for this incident in the first place was being the crime of being a cis woman who happened to be six foot four. Walmart decided to fire this woman, citing her as a security risk. The reason for the firing is an obvious farce, they simply didn't want to deal with other further incidences like that occurring in the state. Human bodies are not a one-size-fits-all. There are so many different body types, and any woman could be subject to harassment for their hair, you know, having a certain type of bone structure, their size. And ordinances like these encourage witch hunts and harassment. I strongly urge the repeal of this subsection. There is no reason for it to exist, and being a creep in public is already illegal and is covered by other ordinances. When ordinances like these are allowed to exist, it hurts trans people, it hurts cis people, it hurts everybody. And everyone deserves the right, in the city of Lansing, to use the restroom with dignity and safety that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Linda Lee Tarver, followed by Ivan Droste.
Hi, thank you so much. I wanted to share my displeasure with the repeal of this ordinance. In Michigan, scholars suggest that repealing any law ordinance can lead to legal uncertainty and unintended consequences. Currently, no person shall peep into, open the door, or be in any restroom or locker room for the opposite sex. And that is current, that is currently what the ordinance says. However, there are exceptions in the current ordinance that I would ask that you consider adding our transgender family and friends into the ordinance itself. There are exceptions I'm asking that you add to those exceptions, so that persons who are feeling uncomfortable would be included with those exceptions instead of repeal. The unintended consequences of removing this is several. It's common sense that no, there's no penalty for entering a bathroom that would allow someone with a young girl, a child, to be uncomfortable. And I heard and I hear community members talk about their comfort level, but my husband, if repealed, doing nothing more than going in to urinate, could go into a woman's room anywhere in the city of Lansing. And that is the truth. You're removing gender from bathrooms when you remove the penalty for those who seek to do more harm. Not the identity, but it does not affect, it does not say cis men, or whatever you call them, males who do not identify other than male, from going into a female bathroom, because you are removing any penalty for that. And so I urge you to consider that. Number one, there would be no gender bathrooms. Number two, there'd be increase in complaints for those who want to test this ordinance removal. And number three, there will be physical violence and altercations if there is no deterrence. The proponents of this want to say that there's a welcoming city, and I would suggest that this law in 86 was not written to be transphobic. It was written to protect people from voyeurs, peeping toms, predators. And if you want to make Lansing welcoming, out of 109,000 cities in America, as of July 19, 2023, Lansing is the 17th most violent city in America. If you want Lansing to be more welcoming, make Lansing safer and not less safer. Thank you.
Next, we have Ivan Droste, followed by Alyssa Tursak.
Good evening, thank you for your time. My name's Ivan Droste, I'm a resident of the Luton Rich neighborhood here in Lansing. I'm here to speak today in regards to Section 4 of Chapter 684 of the Lansing Court of Ordinances. When I read the text of this section, I tried to get inside the heads of its authors and imagine what may have motivated their thinking. What precisely were they trying to prevent? Let's say that someone who was brought up as a man were to enter a restroom designated for women, or vice versa. What sort of unsavory behavior might such a person get up to? Peeping, sexual violence? Certainly, the law should protect people from these crimes, but it occurs to me that each of these crimes are just that, crimes. These acts are already illegal. So what then is the purpose of Section 684.4? What specifically does this section of the code prohibit, which isn't prohibited elsewhere in the law? I'll tell you, it prohibits the peaceable use of the restroom of one's preference, and that's it. And why should that be illegal? If someone whose birth certificate says female wishes to use the men's restroom, or vice versa, without making trouble, what of it? Let's not beat around the bush, the reason we're discussing this section today is because of its potential impact on our transgender and intersex neighbors. This restroom law could feasibly be used to criminalize the very existence of individuals who have, throughout history, been unfairly discriminated against, harassed, ostracized, demonized, and pushed to the margins of society. The council now has the opportunity to prevent that from happening, so I ask the council to please do the right thing and repeal Section 684.4. I yield my remaining time. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Alyssa Tursak, followed by William Russell.
Hello, Alyssa Tursak, Fourth Ward resident. I use she/her pronouns, and I am here to put a face to a name, because I have provided written support of the repeal for Section 684.04. I believe that Lansing is filled with good people. I think that there have been, you've heard it tonight, you see people in the audience, people care, they show up because they are invested in the city, and I believe that the, as we're looking at what's happening on a national scale, the belonging in the community building that's happening with neighbors is really important. In order to provide a place where neighbors can come together, it's important to have a space where people can use the restroom that they wish to use. I think, I will offer you this, I believe that we all have had friends over to our house, probably, and we probably all use the same bathroom. I'm guessing you don't have a bathroom in your house, depending on gender. And I recognize a public space is a little bit different than a bathroom and your own personal home, but the same idea applies. We're not trying to create a space where we are checking someone's gender, and we want to create an environment where gender expansive folks can use the restroom in, with dignity. I heard the word dignity, I like that word. I think that's a great word, and I think we can all, we all as Lansingites, Lanstronauts? Lanstronauts, that's the correct phrase, want dignity for our neighbors. So thanks for the consideration. I hope that you will repeal this outdated ordinance, and I think it's, I don't know how it will feel to you, it might feel like a small, simple act, it might feel like a big act, but regardless of how you feel about it, I hope that you know what a big signal it sends to the community if you were to create a place where people can use the restroom that they wish. I want to add one more note in the last little time I have left. I tune in a lot, I stream all the time, the meetings, I'm always watching at home. I've said that before, when I've come down here, that sounds so creepy, but I do, I watch you all, and so I just want you to know, I'm going to continue to watch even if I'm not here, but I really tried to make it today because I wanted you to see my face. I'm a real person, I care about this. Please use your voices and your power to represent us. Thanks.
Thank you. Next is William Russell, followed by Joseph Fawaz. Is William still here? Okay, Joseph Fawaz, followed by Verl Green.
In the past six weeks, I've accomplished more in the past, than in the past six years. Cleaning and painting the basement, moving shelves throughout the basement. I had to snake the main drain line twice over two days because it had so many roots in it. Fixed all the openings on the metal roof and the eaves. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Joseph Fawaz, my address is 5625 K North. It's a demolition issue, sorry. I've cleaned all the brush outside and around the yard, making it look more presentable. I've painted all the rooms inside the house. I did make a mistake on the outside steps. When I researched the ordinance, I saw I didn't need a 36-inch landing on the top and bottom of stairs because the door opens inside. Unfortunately, code enforcement informed me that I did need to have a 36-inch landing on the top of the stairs going outside regardless of which way the door went, so I'm working on redoing an unattached deck design on the back of the house with stairs. Consumers Energy is replacing the main gas lines in my neighborhood. Unfortunately, it piled all the dirt on top of my outside ground wires for electrician, so he couldn't finish the job until that's been done. So I'm waiting till Consumers Energy finishes their job, then my electrician can attach the ground line wires to the electrical box, and then I can have the city code come in and make sure all that work is done correctly. Unfortunately, about three weeks ago, I get eye injections in my eye because there's a blockage in the back, it had adverse reaction, and I had, I wore revision for three weeks, so I didn't get any work done the past three weeks, but now it's all good, I've seen three different doctors, we fixed it. So I'm working on getting that accomplished, and that's the main thing with the house. Hopefully, as I said, my electrician can finish getting the connections to the ground wire, get the approval on that, and then continue moving forward with my house. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Verl Green, and Verl will be followed by virtual participant Kimberly Glass, so Verl, and then Kimberly online.
Hi, everybody. We have finished the final HVAC, it's been done. We started painting, cabinets are installed, countertops are installed, scheduled final next week for the electrical and plumbing, and as soon as that's finished, the following week for final building permit, and we're scheduled, unless there's lightning, we want to be done in less than 30 days. So I hope that that's going to work for all of us, and I thank you for your time and for listening this evening. Is there any question? Is there any question? Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, next we have, uh, Kimberly Glass, uh, will be followed by, um, Nicholas Zandi. And while Kimberly's getting queued up, I would indicate we have twelve written communications in support of repealing, uh, the, uh, ordinance that's up for public hearing. Kimberly, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Can you find from the back?
Uh, Kimberly's responding.
Good evening. My name is Kimberly Glass, and I've been a resident here in Lansing for almost twenty years. I strongly support the city council repealing chapter six eight four, section six eighty-four point zero four, use of restrooms intended for the opposite sex. Repealing this ordinance aligns with our values as a city and as a community. Lansing is a place full of hardworking, creative people dedicated to looking out for one another. My neighbors all wave hello when we see each other. We all do our best to pitch in when needed. So in Lansing, we care about each other and we strive to do what's right. This ordinance, though, has the potential to be weaponized to target transgender, non-binary, and intersex individuals just for existing. No one should allow that, not in any city. And I'm proud that our city council is working towards striking this form of harmful ordinance. Gender diverse individuals and trans youth in particular have been under attack, as we all know, from an onslaught of anti-LGBTQIA plus executive orders and legislation introduced in the federal and state government. According to a twenty twenty-five research brief published by the Trevor Project and Movement Advancement Project, How State Policy Affects the Well-Being and Relocation of LGBTQ+ Young People, ninety-four percent of transgender and non-binary young people reported that recent politics negatively impacted their well-being. The American Medical Association further affirms that policies excluding transgender individuals from restrooms and other facilities undermine well-established treatment protocols for gender dysgoria and expose individuals to stigma and discrimination as well as potential harassment and abuse. Here in Lansing, we have the opportunity to rise against the wave of hate and protect our values as a community. Repealing this ordinance is a way for us to stand up and say that we don't believe in discrimination against trans people. It is a way for us to express through policy that an attack on one of us is an attack on all of us. We need to stand up for what is right and let our kids and our fellow citizens know that we have their backs. I urge the city council to vote to repeal section six eight four point zero four. Thank you so much for your time. I yield my time.
Thank you. Next we have Nicholas Zandi, followed by Bridget McConaughey.
Um, so I'll be speaking on a few things. Uh, first is the red tag yet again on the agenda. Honestly, this is getting so prolific that I'm almost used to it, and I really shouldn't be. I should also let you know that there are, because seeing all these red tag properties on the agenda is just, and the makesafe for demolished category is just, it's, I'm not mad about it anymore, I'm just sad, just disappointed. But, um, and adding on to that for something a bit more fruitful, excuse my pun, don't know if that's, uh, worth it, but, um, I'm going to be speaking also on the bathroom ordinance. And I do believe, yes, it should be repealed. And I should also, uh, warn you about something, and I think someone who spoke previously not going to respond to them because I did that before and I got an egg in my face figuratively, um, because of that. So I won't go so long on that, but I will, uh, warn you that there have been a few, uh, people probably on the internet who have utilized something called a dog whistle against trans people, uh, saying that they are predator, that they're, that these laws are trying to protect against predators and peepers, which, and perverts, which is pretty much just a dog whistle for saying, we don't want, uh, trans people in certain bathrooms, which is just downright infuriating and just wrong on so many levels. Like, I, and as shown here, people have been stating th- there is very little evidence that trans people alone have, in general, have been, uh, have been, uh, being, have been predators in the cases of bathrooms. There is virtually li- very little evidence, and yet there are several people who still believe this. And I want to say this to you, try your best to combat this misinformation spread by people like Elon Musk and J.K. Rowling on Twitter, or now known as Axe. Ugh. Um, to please just cons, to please, don't listen to their nonsense and actually vote to repeal this and make sure that the Trump administration doesn't weaponize this. As the old saying goes, for preparing for wannabe dictators, do not obey in advance. That means do not listen to their ridiculous requests before they fo- become full-on dictators. That is all I'm going to say, and I shall yield the rest of my time, and please repeal that ordinance.
Thank you. Next we have Bridget McConaughey, followed by Kelsey.
My name is Bridget McConaughey, and I am a resident of Ward One, and I am happy to hear that the city council has decided to bring, uh, agenda item seven forward, the repeal of section four, the bathroom ban that has been enacted since nineteen eighty-six. I would like to, uh, congratulate all the people whose lives will be the same since nineteen eighty-six, since this law has not been enforced. Congratulations, this, your life will not change at all. Perfect. For all of those who do, who are affected by the repeal, this does a great move, very simple, yet profound, to remove ambiguity and to remove a threat that persists for those of us who have to think about whether or not it is safe to enter the restroom. I'd like to, uh, think about the city employees that may fall into various categories along the transgender umbrella, who will be able to go to bathroom at their workplace without any fear. All of us who work do deserve the idea that we might be free to use the restroom safe from retaliation, and as the city has already not been retaliating, it is a very simple and profound change. Additionally, in twenty twenty-three, the state legislature amended the Elliott Larson Civil Rights Act, uh, to include protections on the basis of gender identity, sexuality, and orientation. Steps like these right now can help to remove liability that the city may have for any future things, even though it has not been enforced here. There have been many reasons to go ahead and be proactive on protecting the city should those sorts of lawsuits become prevalent as higher-profile cases of enforcement that, once again, in our courts, we don't, we still have an ambiguity as to what the enforcement is, but removing that liability now can save the city quite a bit in, uh, potential liability for future, uh, activities. With that, I am very grateful that this is on the agenda now, and I yield my time.
Thank you. Next is Kelsey, followed by Ty Heitzig.
I was having a lively conversation with someone about this, so, um, I'm talking about number seven with ordinance. Um, I'm actually really encouraged that we're having this conversation, and Chris Wilt, I really appreciate you bringing this conversation. It's a really important thing. Um, I'm a member of the queer community. Many of my friends are queer trans, you know, fill in the blank, any number of the, uh, the rainbow. My thing is that I think it is so rare that someone is going to go into a bathroom following this repeal, that someone's going to go into the bathroom to harass people, to try to create some kind of issue. We're just there in the bathroom to poo and peep, like, sorry, to poop and pee. That's what we're there for, at least that's what I'm, and, you know, there for. And I hate that our culture warriors have chosen to make this trans bathroom or trans sports this huge issue, and it's not that complicated. Like, I'm there just to use the bathroom, and I, I worry, I worry about that narrative. Our trans siblings are under so much scrutiny and under so much pressure. Why has the culture, why has the right chosen this? Like, it's such a bizarre issue to me. Um, they deserve every bit of dignity that we don't, that we do. And if you're familiar, the, the first book burning in the Holocaust was of trans medical books and documentation. There was a clinic, I forget the name of it, where they were doing all this research. In our community, my community, we lost a ton of medical research. And so there's that quote, right, of like, first they came for this group, and I said nothing, they came for, first they came for trans people, and we said nothing. Next, they came from documented people, we said nothing. At a certain point, do you think this isn't going to affect you? Do you think this rhetoric is not going to affect you as an individual? With the Trump administration, what we're seeing is they're taking every single group, and you think that you're not being dehumanized next, you're missing the point. If a man wants to walk into a man's bathroom, now, I've never experienced a bouncer at the door, I don't know if you have, and we have voyeurism laws for a reason, those will stay in the books. We have assault laws for a reason, those will stay in the books. Why have we chosen as a culture to scrutinize these people when they are just there to pee and poop at the end of the day, right? So I appreciate you looking at this ordinance and having these conversations, and, um, it's not that, it's not that complicated, right? So, um, I'm actually here to support something, so thank you for doing that. Um, yeah, I yield the rest of my time.
Thank you. Next we have Ty Heitzig, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hi, my name is Ty Heitzig. I work down on the seventh floor in the permit office as an engineering technician. I'm also transgender. I would like to speak in favor of the removal of restroom use regulations. I use the women's restroom here in City Hall and have since I started over a year ago. In that time, no one of us has ever had a problem with this. But with how the federal administration is galvanizing the country against people like me, I would feel safer if this ordinance was not hanging over my head. One of the things I love about Lansing is the opportunity it has provided me. I would be forced to the margins of society in most places, but here I get to serve my community and local governments. I hope that you will repeal the ordinance so I can continue to serve with the confidence my city supports me. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Loretta Stanaway, followed by Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Well, I'm not going to talk about toilets. I'm going to talk about the budget. Uh, one observation, it seems to me that we used to do the budget presentations during the committee, uh, during the actual council meeting instead of during the committee of the hall. So if I'm not remembering correctly, I'm sorry, but seems to me during, um, doing them during the committee of the hall can have an effect on people that aren't able to make it, that don't see the plays, and is a little less accessible to the public. I think that when you consider the budget, things to consider are things like the increase in millages, how that's impacting the public, how we are being nickled and dimed to death with little fee increases here, little fee increases there, and two more dollars a quarter for the trash or whatever. Those ten dollar and twenty dollar and thirty dollar fee increases, especially in the parks programs, can mean another kid left on the street instead of inside of a program that could help them to lead a different lifestyle. I think we could do some different things, some minor, some bold. Some of the minor ones would be deleting some of the things like, I know they're popular programs, but do we need to spend a quarter of a million dollars on facade grants for a business owner, business owners who should be responsible for taking care of their own properties? Do we need to have, and our, our friends group takes advantage of these, but I still am going to say this, do we need neighborhood improvement grants, neighborhood empowerment grants, whatever they're particularly called? Does the Board of Water and Light need to do the chili cook-off and all the other events that they do? Couldn't we save some money by eliminating those things and putting that money back in the pockets of the taxpayers? On a larger scale, you know, we have to stop being afraid to do something new and different. I saw recently that the Mackinac Center for Public Policy issued a statement that a study they did in the state of Michigan showed one out of eleven jobs promised by developers or builders or people coming in for TIFs and private pilots and all the rest of those things actually was materialized. So we are not getting the value for the dollars that we're putting out and the expectations that we have. So I would say no more Orpris, no more pilots, no more Brownfields, no more tax abatements. Do you know how much money that would save us in any given budget year? It would really add up quickly. And it's inherent, I think, on the people that are profiting from these things to pay for them. We don't have anybody paying our way. They should be paying their own way. Also, uh, the parks, millage is what's covering all those park improvements that are mentioned in the budget. So I think that, um, there's a little bit of sleight of hand there going on. So remember, it's park millage that's paying for your park improvements. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Farhan Sheikh Omar.
Good evening, Farhan Omar. I want to talk about quickly item number twenty, which talks about CDDM corporation. Um, I did go to the hearing, and as I sat there, and Ryan was sitting there, and the family was sitting there, and as we heard the overwhelming evidence against this business, the only thing that came to my mind was, how were they able to stay in business in this city for so long? Not one homicide, not two homicides, but three. And we just heard tonight that two out of the three was inside the establishment. Had this city done its job and held that business accountable, this family would not be suffering tonight. Their dad would be here tonight. This is a business that poses a colossal danger to this community, and we don't want another family suffering. Like, we watched one hour video where there was prostitution, where there was drugs, where people weren't being patted down, where teenagers were working there. That's just one hour. Could you imagine, over the twenty years, what we didn't see? We should be ashamed of ourselves as a city, that we have businesses like this in our city, making profit and putting this community at risk. They put profit before people, before their customers. Why aren't we not being proactive? Why haven't we been proactive? Why are we just now being reactive? Why are we just now taking action? The second homicide should have been enough. The first homicide should have been enough, but nah, three people. We gotta do better. And I hope their license is gone forever. Thank you.
Thank you. That was our last speaker, so we are to referral of public hearing, item number seven.
EDI.
And we're to the consent agenda.
Vice President Carter.
Uh, yes, I will move the following consent agenda item, agenda items. A tribute and recognition of missionary Mother Ruth Juanita Fox's eightieth birthday. Uh, we have completed the items nine through twelve at the beginning of council. Um, move on to thirteen, setting a public hearing on fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six budget. That's going to be on May fifth. Setting a public hearing on community development block grant, annual action plan for fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, and that is going to be on April twenty-first. The grant acceptance for Kroger tree planting, Arbor Day grant for Cav- Kavanaugh Park. The grant acceptance for Michigan Drug Court grant for sobriety, sobriety court, and fines for unregistered vehicles parking in the roadway. And with that, I move the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there-
Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, we're to resolutions for action, item 18 and 19 relate to the LG Energy Solution Michigan, Inc.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, so this was an application that was filed from LG Energy Solution requesting the transfer of the existing IFE certificate from Altonen Cells LLC pursuant to the Public Act 198 of 1974. This is necessary for the applicant, the assessor, and the representative of the affected taxing units, and an opportunity for a hearing that was held on March 24th, and that was for the transfer of the existing industrial exemption certificate 2022-006. And with that, I move that resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
This next portion is part two of the resident zone of the transfer from Altonen Cells LLC to LG Energy Solution Michigan, Inc. at 8100 Davis Highway. And with that, I move the resolution.
Okay, proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, we're to items 20 and 21, determinations on cabaret and liquor license revocation for CDDM Corporation.
Vice President Carter.
Yes, so there was a revocation hearing on March 25th for the determination of cabaret license revocation, CDDM Corporation DBA Dreamgirls at 5910 South Pennsylvania Avenue. There was Director Van Fossen, who was the hearing officer to make the following findings of fact and recommendations for this particular revocation. And earlier today, at Committee of a Whole, the Lansing City Council hereby affirmed the hearing officer's proposed finding on fact and recommendation effective immediately. And with that, I move the resolution.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
The next one is the same, similar, but this is for the determination request for liquor license revocation to the Michigan Liquor Control Commission, CDM Corporation DBA Dreamgirls at 5910 South Pennsylvania. This was also affirmed by the Lansing City Council earlier today at Committee of a Whole for the revocation hearing that was held on March 25th, and that the City Council affirms the hearing officer's proposed finding of fact and recommendation effective immediately. And with that, I make a motion.
Okay, is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, items 22 through 25 are orders to make safe or demolish to the owners of various properties in the city.
Councilwoman Pali Vanaglu.
Thank you, President Cost. The first property on the agenda is 1033 Shepherd Street. This property was originally red-tagged on January 1st of 2022. This case was heard by a Lansing demolition hearing officer on September 26th of 2024, where the hearing officer determined that this property should be made safe or demolished by November 25th of 2024. On March 24th of 2025, City Council held a public show cause hearing. And to date, it has been determined that compliance with the order of the demolition hearing officer has not occurred. And with that, I move the resolution for a 21-day make-safe or demolish order.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, next, we have 1723 Osband Avenue. I do want to remind council members that we did have a comment during public comment on this property. This property was originally red-tagged on June 26th of 2015. The demolition hearing officer heard this case on August 22nd, 2024, and ordered that the building be made safe or demolished by November 19th of 2024. City Council held a public show cause hearing on February 25th of 2025. It has been determined that compliance has not been completely fulfilled. And with that, I would move the resolution for a 60-day make-safe or demolish.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes. Passes, 6-1.
Thank you. Next, we have 5625 K North Road. Again, we did hear public comment on this property this evening as well. This structure was originally red-tagged on March 13th of 2009. Lansing Demo Hearing Office heard this case on August 22nd of 2024 and ordered that the property be made safe or demolished by September 23rd of 2024. A public show cause hearing was held here at City Council on February 24th of 2025. It's been determined that this property has not been completely made safe as of today's date, and with that, I will move the resolution for a 60-day make-safe or demolish order.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, thank you. And last, we have 204 East Potter Avenue. This property was originally red-tagged on November 30th of 2017. The Lansing Demo Hearing Officer heard this case on August 22nd of 2024 and determined that the property should be made safe or demolished by November 19th of 2024. City Council held a public show cause hearing on February 24th of 2025. We do have a update from EDP Director Van Fossen that the final building inspection was passed today. And I just want to make a note, whether or not ultimately this resolution passes, the property has been made safe, and essentially, the red tag, according to Director Van Fossen, will be removed shortly. So I just wanted to offer that to council as the most recent update. It was received late today. And so with that, we do have a resolution for a 60-day make-safe or demolish order on this property.
Okay, do we have any further questions? Councilman Spatafor.
With, thank you, President Cost. With the news from the department late this afternoon, they've made safe, so I'm not familiar, I don't think I've seen one where this has happened. So that sort of short-circuits the process. So should we deny this resolution? Is that...
So my thought on it was, we should move forward, because if it's been made safe, let's just close the loop of this property, and then it's made safe, so it's done. And that way, it's off our table, it's done, there's a clean ending to it, and then we don't end up in like Bizarro World, where now we're getting like 10 different outcomes.
Second season and so on. Okay, so is that, can I ask the city attorney, Mr. City Attorney, if we vote this forward, make-safe, demolish, they've made it safe, they satisfy the requirements, they start completely fresh, fresh, fresh light?
Correct.
At this particular...
Correct. On this one, if you vote in the affirmative on the resolution, the resolution will pass, and the matter will be closed immediately.
Okay.
Which is a great way to button it up. Councilmember Jackson.
I won't be supporting it, because I could just potentially see in the future where something comes up in a few years, and then you look back and said, oh, the council had a make-safe and demolish voted on, in the affirmative on this date, and then maybe hold it against somebody then. So if it's already safe, we shouldn't have put that extra check on their box, so that's why I won't.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion? Okay? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, we are to ordinances for introduction and setting of public hearings. We have President Cost introduce an ordinance of the city of Lansing, Michigan, re adopting the codified ordinances of the city of Lansing. The ordinance is read a first time by its title and referred to the Committee of the Whole.
Vice President Carter.
I will introduce and set the public hearing for April 21st for re adopting the codified ordinance.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
Okay, we are to speaker registration for public comment on city government-related matters, so that's the yellow sheet in the back. If you have not signed in and wish to speak, Brian will meet you in the back in the next minute. And in the meantime, we are to the referral items.
Vice President Carter.
I motion that all items be considered as being read in full, and that the proper referrals be made by President Cost.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
We have from the city clerk minutes of boards and commissions.
Place on file.
And a fireworks display license for the Independence Day celebration.
City operations.
From the mayor, we have development area liquor license for La Muleta at 5334 South Martin Luther King.
City operations.
And we have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12 traffic control orders.
Pop those over to city operations.
Okay, and then we have from the hearing officer Van Fossen, a determination on the CDDM.
Committee of the Whole, place on file.
And from President Cost, fines for unregistered vehicles in the roadway.
Committee of the Whole, place on file.
Okay, we are to motion of excused absence.
I make a motion to excuse Councilmember Garza.
Okay, we have a proper motion in place. Any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Aye. Oppose? Passes.
We are to remarks by council members.
Any further remarks by council members? Nothing? I would remind folks, we are in the middle of Michigan Avenue construction. Our businesses are open, including the ones past the yellow or the orange signs that say do not go around. Those businesses are still open. They have access around the back from the side streets. So I would encourage everyone to go eat, or buy a book, or go to some of the really cool shops on Michigan Avenue, because they're going to need our help more than ever this summer with the hard closure. And we don't want to see those businesses go. And they are wonderful places to shop, eat, thrive, or fix your MacBook, too. So if there's nothing further...
Real quick.
Oh, councilmember who's saying?
Yeah, just real quick, because the question was asked, and I think it's important with regard to transparency, we actually had our office manager look into budget presentation conversations and things like that, and at least back to, you know, in terms of 2000, I think it was back to 2013, as far as she could look back, you know, for now. It's always been part of Committee of the Whole. Now, there was a year where there was a number of special Committee of the Whole meetings, Chris Swoop could probably remember this, that were called during the day, and they were all scheduled within one week, the same week. And so they actually made it through all budget presentations and conversations within that week. But again, they have at least dating back to 2013 been part of the Committee of the Whole process. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, then we are to the mayor's comments.
Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor's good.
Okay, public comment on city government-related matters. We have Daniel Arnold, followed by Michelle Lalone.
Good evening, everybody. This is Daniel Arnold, Facebook Guy Smiley. It's been a long time since I've come into City Council. I don't have anything pressing in terms of grievance or complaints or anything. I'm just really happy to be in this community and see all your faces, everybody out here who just turned out to really care about our city. Just wanted to know that my girlfriend, Michelle, is here to come, and she's really bold to come and speak to you, and what she cares about, about the boarded-up houses near the state Capitol, she really thinks that, she really takes pride in our city, and I do, too, and we just really want to see, you know, everything made use of. And those kitty-cornered to the Capitol boarded-up houses, it's just, it just doesn't look well. But I love the art in our city, I love a lot of the advances, I love the mercy for the poor. I want to see a lot of, a lot of love continue in a lot of diverse places, so thank you.
Thank you. Next is Michelle Lalone, followed by Loretta Stanaway.
Hello, Lansing. I'm Michelle Lalone. I recently started doing smiley tours with Guy Smiley to visit local state, federal police and security. I noticed there are some houses or buildings that are boarded up kitty-cornered from the state Capitol. Many people from all over visit the state Capitol. Lansing should be embarrassed about the boarded houses. Fix them up or tear them down, maybe put a restaurant there. Some of the sergeants have said it would be nice to have a new restaurant nearby. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Loretta Stanaway, followed by Linda Epling.
Thank you, Adam, for correcting my memory. And speaking of memory, it seems to me, and I could again be wrong, but it seems to me back in February of 2018, when there were floods that went through the whole city, MSU's campus, et cetera, et cetera. They were quite severe at Kalamazoo and Homer, where they were again recently. But at that time, the city deployed some rapid deployment flood barriers, portable, rigid plastic, orange, I think they were. And those things were successful at diverting the floods and preventing businesses and residences from being inundated. So my question is, where are they? Why didn't we use them this time? And then, just as points of information, I believe, Mayor, it's the University Club this year for the Ramadan dinner. And for CPLs in bars, bars, yes. You cannot take a gun into a bar alone as a bar establishment. But if it's a restaurant combination, state law actually says if it's 50% or more food sales versus alcohol sales, you can go in with a CPL or an open carry. If it's 50% alcohol or more versus food, then you cannot. I asked recently at a meeting when the chief was president, how does a citizen know going in, especially if it's someplace they've never been, which is which? And his answer was, you have to use your best judgment, err on the side of caution. If it's primarily it's a bar and they're selling hot dogs and chips, it's not going to hit the 50% rule. If it's Leo's Lodge, Leo's Coney Island, you might get a different outcome. But that's the distinguishment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Linda Epling, followed by Nicholas Zandi.
Hello, my name is Linda Epling, and I live in Eaton County, Atlanta City of Lansing. One, on May 6th, Eaton County will once again be putting forth before the taxpayers a request to increase their property tax. I am really pissed off about this, I can't tell you about that. They're going to go 2%. They want to fund Sheriff's Office and the judges. Eaton County residents should not vote for this increase. Living in Lansing, you are already paying for police protection and judges. It makes no sense to allow yourself to be taxed for services you will never receive. Any money sent will be used to police areas in terms of, it's going to be used to police areas that are too cheap to tax themselves. We should not have to pay for their police or the judges. We have no obligation in terms of paying for services for those areas that are just too cheap to tax themselves. Let them tax themselves. My second issue goes to voter location. Voter location in terms of this particular vote has been changed by Chris Swoop's office. For some unknown reason, the location has been moved to Delta Township. Now, this is across from Herocks. This location is about four or five miles from Lansing. Though bus service is provided, it will take about an hour to get there on a bus. Chris Swoop's office has provided a minimal amount of information regarding the bus service. In fact, until I raised the issue, no bus service was being provided. If you are not happy with this type of service being provided, you should call his office at 517-483-4131. Note, I want you to note that members of the Eaton County Board came here, they sat at these desks, and they discussed the issue of taxes in terms of Eaton County. I, as a tax-paying person, and I'm paying all your salaries with my taxes, get a lousy three minutes to get up here and put my position forth. I do not... forth. I do not appreciate that at all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, and finally, we have Nicholas Zandi.
Since I'm the final speaker, I might as well make my public comment and go out strong, I guess. So I'm going to be speaking generally about what I've addressed a little bit earlier, and that is, do not obey in advance. And again, clarifying that do not obey in advance means do not listen to crazy people in office when they're, who want to be dictators when their requests are absolutely, again, as I said, ridiculous. Again, I've said this before with the bathroom ordinance, it needs to be repealed. There is very little to no justification for it still existing. Again, trans people barely even have done all the peeping tomness of the whole thing, or whatever the female equivalent of a pink peeing tom is, even though, yes, I do believe there's, there are more than two genders. But that's neither here nor there on that. But also, when it comes to don't obey in advance, Trump has made indications that he might consider declaring martial law after April 20, which coincides with a certain German dictator's birthday, who I will not mention the name of here, because I think this might get cut off by City TV, but you know exactly who I'm talking about. It's about the swastika, it's hint, it's similar to that swastika graffiti that I caught at Mayor. But having said that, you need, and what he might consider doing is rounding up anyone who probably is a, probably a person of color, or someone who's LGBT, or anyone, regardless of their citizenship, and round them up and send them to an El Salvadorian prison camp. That is just downright infuriating and uncalled for, and just straight up dictatorial from what I've heard. Now, I want to be wrong. I hope he doesn't do that. But this, but the fact that he has considered it through an executive order actually terrifies me. And so because of that, you should consider, as a city council, probably vote on a resolution that says ICE agents and officers in general cannot come into people's houses regardless of citizenship without a warrant. That should be protected by the Fourth Amendment. I'm not suggesting that we should consider becoming a sanctuary city. That's dumb. We've tried that, and it failed miserably. And all it did was give us deservedly bad press from Fox News. But what I am saying is that we should at least give people protections if they've earned their citizenship. And I think that we should place warrants on not just local police officers, but also federal ICE agents, as well as the FBI and the CIA for searching and ringing properties. That's all I'm going to say, and I'll yield the last few seconds of my time, even though there's no one to yield to you next.
Thank you. That was our final speaker.
We're adjourned at 9:49.